Good evening, welcome to the February 6th Plimpton Board of Selectmen's meeting. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 50A Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. Okay, we just had an executive session, and now we're ready to go. And you think the Plimpton Historical is at 7:00?
I think it's at 7:00.
Okay, so we're gonna be jumping around on our agenda a bit. Bree, would you just went out and asked Tara to come in? She had a couple things she wanted to talk to us about. Okay, in the meantime, do you have anything on the fire and EMS? We left it on as an update, but...
Yeah, we continue to been working with Barbara Gomez and the fire chief on the budget. It's going to be a fair amount increase that's gonna go to Finance Committee, and I think my intent is that we'll be able to show operationally how the budget is put together in some detail. And then we, out of that, I'm sure they're gonna swallow a little bit, and then we just talk about what the options are going forward in terms of how do we solve this financial problem. So I think we've got a fairly good breakdown of all the expenses and how the wages are calculated. What needs to happen then is if this is too expensive for the town, what options do we have and how do we pursue them? And I think that's where the discussion's going next.
Okay, so a number of years ago, there actually was an ambulance study committee.
Yep.
Is it worth bringing that into, you know, back into being?
The people who were on it, most of them are gone.
Well, you know, not necessarily the same people, but the committee.
What there is, Nate Sides from the Finance Committee has two other people that are willing to sit down. And I think that's the way we go.
Okay.
So it would be us four, and we'll start with the budget, because that will be the easiest way to go through and say, this is how the operation runs today. And out of that drops these numbers. Then we start to say, okay, what alternatives do we have? Private ambulance, talking to other towns, et cetera. The, probably the wild card in the whole thing is the revenue side. It looks like we're going to be substantially up, but you can't count on it. So the question is, from a budget side, how much do we, are we willing to say, yes, that makes sense to put in to offset the expenses? Because the calls are driving things like wages, medicine, the supplies, et cetera. And these are the expensive pieces of the pool. But I do think we've got a good template now to start the discussion.
Okay. All right, thanks for keeping us up to date.
John, everything is all said and done, and we're ready to go to town meeting. Would it be possible to do a meeting just on that?
Yes.
Maybe even an off night where it could be taped so that people kind of have an understanding and they're not hearing this the first time?
We've talked about that, and I'm 100% in agreement. I think we have to have a couple of meetings.
Usually we do something at the library.
Yeah.
And we've done something here as well.
You know, five, six people come to the library. But I think we could do one here, and I think given if the amounts stay the way they are, I'm sure people are gonna be interested. And maybe one at the club.
Okay, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we put out a press release ahead, too.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tara?
Did anybody have any questions about the positions that are up for election that I gave last week? I had given the information and the election calendar, so if you wanna sign, this is a blank form, it doesn't have the people's names who are expiring terms, but just the positions that are available on these are what will go on the ballot this year and their terms. So this is just a generic form with those positions and their terms. This is when they were expiring this year, and this is when they'll go through. So if you can just sign the bottom, just have I that I gave them to you.
Do you need all of us to sign, or just the chief person?
It doesn't matter.
Motion that I sign this elected officials with terms expiring form from Tara.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I had just one other question to ask, and I'm not sure if it's something that, are you meeting next week, too?
Yes, but next week is the meeting that I told you is pretty busy, so...
I just have, it's sort of an administrative question, and it has to do with our phone system right now. We're just swamped in the elections office, I mean, town clerk's office, because we're processing dog licenses and census forms. And we're finding that we're getting taken away from what our regular responsibilities are just by answering the phones and distributing the calls to all of the other boards and committees. Our phone system automatically comes to our office for every call, and we have a way to just leave a machine, a message, it will be a personal message from us, but giving the extensions of all of the boards and committees, and it will go directly to the departments that are here during the regular business hours. And we're still distributing messages to the volunteer boards by email, so just for temporary reasons, for a couple of weeks, I wondered if we could just change the machine, have a machine answer and give the direct lines. Most of the people who call the departments that are open during regular business hours have the direct extension anyways, and they can call them directly. But just for temporary, just so we can get caught up in the next couple of weeks on our census forms and dog licenses, it would be helpful. We're, we've had a great response to the dog licensing and the census form, so like I said, it would just be for temporary reasons, and then we'd like to look at it in the future. This would be just short term.
I think that it's been nice that you've been acting as the receptionist for the townhouse, but I don't see that it's entirely necessary, and I think automating a bit is a good idea.
I agree, you've got too much to do to be taking these calls.
It's just a lot right now, and like I said, every call takes up a lot of time, and when we have volunteer boards, we try to relay as much information as possible, but all of those boards and committees have email addresses, and we do, that's what we're doing for our residents, but we're just swamped right now, and we don't have our 50 hours of our senior workoff person. We've had somebody for the last three years, and we don't have anybody assigned to us for this timing right now, and it's been 50 hours' worth of manpower helping with our census forms and dog licensing. So I'm gonna follow up with Chris Marano, but I'm not sure where she stands right now with her position and heading up that program, so we're just needing some man-hours, and that would be a short-term solution, just for a couple of weeks in our office.
Okay, so, and just to make it clear, this is not on the agenda, but Tara came in today, and it's really, there's some time constraints. She needs this right away, she needs some time free, by the way.
Yeah, if we wait until the 27th to put it on, then it won't help short-term. And we do have an additional month from the last bylaw change for dog licensing. We added an extra month. It used to be just July and August to license your dogs, now it's January through the end of March. So it won't affect, it doesn't affect late fees or anything, because we've added an additional month, but people send their checks in, and we don't have enough hours, they're coming in faster than we can process them, and we don't want checks dated, you know, much further in advance than we already have, so...
Okay, so motion to allow the town clerk's office to automate the phone system.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Tara, we also had you on here for that question you raised about the wage and personnel bylaw updates. Do you wanna talk about that, or we don't need to, or?
No, we can. I asked the question about updating the bylaws, because it was my assumption when I was elected as town clerk that wage and personnel bylaws were separate from updating the zoning and municipal bylaws. And, for example, there was one, as the record keeper, or the public records keeper and keeper of all of our records in the townhouse, the last version that I have is from 2009 in my office, and there's at least two bylaws that happened that were passed at town meeting that are not reflected in the copy that I have. So I was alarmed about that, and it was never clear to me, like I said, I didn't think that it was one of my responsibilities to update the wage and personnel bylaws. So we've had some communication with the wage and personnel department, but I just wanted it clarified. And right now, I don't have an electronic version in any word processing document, so it's gonna need to be retyped, as far as I've heard from the wage and personnel bylaw committee. So I'm happy to do that.
Can we not scan and cut and paste, or?
No, I don't have a writable Adobe program. Even still, it's an outdated version from word processing from 2009. So it's only about three pages, but it's gonna have to be...
Do you have it? Do you have a hard copy? If you give it to me, I'll type it up for you.
I have a hard copy, yep.
I'll type it up for you.
I can do the same, I can do the same.
You have got plenty to do.
It's just another...
Yeah.
But I just really want clarified that that is not part of my job description.
I don't think that's part of your job description.
I was told from my predecessor.
Do you think it is?
I sort of disagree. If it's part of your job description to update the other two, I don't know why wage and personnel isn't part of the whole booklet. You know, we have bylaws, we have zoning, we have municipal, we should also have wage and personnel in one booklet.
Well, it's all part of the bylaw review committee. We'd also like to add all the mass general laws that have been adopted in Plimpton in our bylaws, so that we can see what's been adopted, and also special acts of legislation. We don't have any, aside from manually looking at warrants, there's no database, and that was one of the projects on my list, so that it's searchable for any time somebody's looking for any type of bylaw. But I can read the town clerk's job description that I have that's based on the state town clerk's job, elected job descriptions, and first, I know that my predecessor had it be completely separate from our responsibilities.
The wage and personnel portion?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just think that it ought to be part of the bylaw.
Once it's in a, you know, a document, it's easy to update.
Right.
It's only three or four pages, but I just need it formalized, because I know that there's two that are not included in the one that I have in my office, so...
My feeling is that it would fall within your purview with the other two.
So I would like to look at what the job description says. I mean, it's fine going forward, but I'm just saying, in general, it was always, as far as I knew, separate from all the other bylaw revisions.
And I guess, you know, maybe it would be up for us to decide whether or not it should be part of one booklet, and...
It's easy for me to do.
It should be with the bylaws, even as an addendum afterwards, that the, because not included in it is our capital bylaw and wage and personnel bylaw.
Yeah, all the bylaws.
Everything should be electronic.
And the other, and the other issue that she speaks to, I spoke with Adobe. Now, we desperately need that, that's a simple piece, because either that or somebody has to type it in Word and play with it then. They, you can't just go down and buy the box of software any longer for a lot of programs, that's one of them. They basically put you on a monthly, they bill you monthly, but they look for a credit card, they're looking for something easy, and we don't have that, so you kind of have to go through a hierarchy there to get them into a situation to bill. It's not terribly expensive, I believe we can afford it under, you know, under the budget, but it's something that the town desperately needs.
It's a subscription service.
But she desperately needs it, because it's just so much of a time saver.
Yeah.
You know, or some, like I said, or somebody has to take the time to physically type it back into Word. You can't make, you can make the conversion from a PDF to a Word with Adobe, no problem, but we'll have to have that piece of software that does that.
Is everything else electronic?
How much, what are we talking about?
I forget what it was, it was like...
Four, 500?
Twenty dollars, less than that, I think. A couple, $250 a year maybe total, I forget what the monthly fee was. It's not a lot of money, I mean, in overall terms of what we need to spend, but it's just getting to pull their billing system through our accounts payable system, that's the difficult part, because we don't have a credit card, and, you know, and so on and so forth, so that makes a, that makes a difference. And they're not, at least initially, they weren't about to bill us, they just want a credit card so they can hit you every month, which is okay, except we don't have one.
So why don't we take that up with Barbara and see if she can figure out an answer of how we can get this paid?
Well, yeah, I mean, again, there are powers that are anathema to having a credit card, but it really is a convenience, particularly in today's age, you know, to, for certain things that we do.
I'm surprised we don't have one.
Okay, so bottom line is...
Well, and for the wage and personnel, I mean, if it literally, I'm such a fast typer, it would take me a half an hour to just rectify this situation.
Okay, if you wanna do it, I just know you're crazy busy.
And I'm going, if it's going to be incorporated anyways into the revised bylaws and help with the bylaw review committee, then I'll just get that done. And I know which two sections there are, I'm just not sure about placement, so I'll just ask the board to tell me where to put it, and it will be revised, and I can put the dates that they were passed, that those changes were made. But we'll put an edited version date on it to show that I updated it now, and we'll have information about when it actually was passed, which town meeting. One of them was 2011, one of them was from, I think, last year. So when I do revisions to the bylaws, I take the town meeting warrant and the minutes, and it's set, most of the revisions to our zoning and bylaws, say, to revise municipal bylaw and whatever it is. So when I go through the minutes and take the minutes for the town meeting, I scan just for those, and, you know, those are the ones that go to the Attorney General. We will have to figure out if it's considered, it might just be a subsection of our bylaws, but won't be considered a municipal bylaw, that would have to go to the Attorney General. I'm not sure about that.
I'm not sure either.
I think it's just administrative bylaws that wouldn't fall under municipal, but I'm not sure about that. And I was at a conference last week and took information from General Code, which they do recodification of bylaws, and that's what they do. They take and they restructure bylaws, and they give advice on how to restructure it. And I would like them to come for a presentation to the bylaw review committee, because every single little change that they make is gonna have to be submitted to the Attorney General, even if it's municipal. Every modification that's done, there's, you know, five to seven forms per change.
So we'll set you up with the bylaw committee?
Yeah, I've talked to them already, and I've gotten the literature, and I'll try to get the person to come explain what they do, because I'm not sure about the costs. But because I hear and see that there's gonna be a whole revamping and, you know, reviewing of everything, there's a way that they recodify it with the Attorney General with the proper language, where it's almost like a, you know, replacement, and it's approved the way they have the language. And I don't think anybody here has that knowledge.
Okay.
So that, yeah, that will be another group meeting with them, then?
Yep, yep, but I picked up the literature and spoke with somebody from the company, and I had done this a couple of years ago, and the person I spoke with is no longer there. He had been there for about 30 years, and it was another one of the projects that I, you know, have in mind, but haven't been able to get to. So I think it's a good time to do that, because the committee might be able to be the liaison.
Absolutely.
So...
Yeah, and if we're gonna have all the bylaws in one place, it does make sense that you would be the...
I'm still figuring out how to search the public information for the acts and resolves for special legislation. I might ask Betty Di Benedictus from Tom Coulter's office to see if she can give me where to search for the word "Plimpton" for special acts of legislation, to just get them all to pull up, because I know that all of the acts and resolves books that we have are online now.
Okay.
So it's not a manual thing, and it would be the quickest way to segregate Plimtins.
Oh, yeah.
For special acts. It would be, like, really difficult for me to go through manually all of our town meetings.
And isn't that what Marilyn Brown just did?
Yes, she did, for the one she found for us.
Yeah, but you, for one specific thing?
Yeah, yeah, no, but...
Right, so it's searchable somewhere, that's all I'm saying. I'd like to search it, and then if we have to change the formatting so it fits our bylaw formatting, I just need to figure it out.
Let's do it.
So everybody was asking, who has what information to give to the bylaw committee? I have one.
Perfect.
Okay, did anybody from that committee talk to you yet?
Yes, I spoke with Dean Cohen.
Okay.
I think on her list as the liaison person, so...
Okay, so that she'll have a report back to the committee?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
And I told her I would put it in writing, and I have a few other things written down, too, for changes.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Tara.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you very much.
All right, so I'm gonna give those to you.
Just wanna come up?
Those are the two trust documents. And according to Chris, they're not in anybody's name.
Sure.
Just the society, yes.
Did you, did you have a copy of the lease?
No, John does, I think. John, do you have a copy of the lease?
I do, but I didn't bring it.
Okay, all right.
Hi, welcome. So we're going to talk about the historical, Plimpton Historical Society building, and we have an account that monies were left for the upkeep of the building, and I guess there's a door that needs repair and a few other things. So do you have a presentation or something, or you just...
Well, we asked Jessica to come in and kind of talk about what...
Do you have a presentation?
I don't really, but to talk about kind of where we're headed, what the plan is long-term for the building. I did talk to John through email about the door, because there was concern about whether or not that needed to be more historic than just something we could pick up at Lowe's, and just kind of getting the ball rolling as talking about maintenance and getting a plan as how, you know, what...
And I seem to remember there was some question about changing the lease, is that?
Well, what I think that there was talk about, is it possible to change the lease and maybe clarify it? I think there were things that were kind of ambiguous that Jessica had hoped that we would discuss and possibly come up with a plan going forward.
Okay, so...
So in a nutshell...
We need a couple more copies of the lease, and do you have a copy?
I didn't find one.
No, but you have one?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So as I understand it, the lease right now says that the Historical Society is responsible for the maintenance.
Yeah.
It sure is, yeah.
Right.
And I guess the question is, one, how do you intend to do that? And then we have the question of the funds that were left.
And the door.
And the door, and the siding, and the windows that leak heat like crazy, and...
Well, it was the pump, and it's been repaired. I'm not entirely sure it's long, because the pump itself will be fine now, but as I understand it, the company that did the repair said it's a very shallow well, and it's pretty old. And so if we continue to have issues with drought, I think we might continue to have pump related issues, whereas the building gets used so infrequently, the toilets are being flushed and then they're running. The problem that we had was, I don't think anyone realized that the toilet was running continuously, it wasn't refilling, because there was no water, and the pump itself turned out.
What is the society being used for now, the building?
Currently, it has a couple of purposes. There are two exercise groups that meet there. There's a yoga group, and there's a zumba group, and they meet, I believe, twice a week each, one of them might only meet once.
I think zumba's twice a week, and yoga's one.
Yes, I know the dogs bark.
My wife's, I have to schedule around.
So it's used for zumba. Periodically, it's rented, we had somebody rent it for two days over a weekend this past fall. We've just actually had an inquiry today, it's for it to be rented out of the room upstairs for practice for the upcoming talent show at Denit. It's been used, the Cub Scouts have used it a couple of times this year, and Book Club has met there once a month. So the Bible Club, yes, the Garden Club has used it, the Main Street Players have used it for practice purposes, so I would say that the zumba and yoga are the most consistent groups.
Are the Cub Scouts meeting there?
When they have meetings, yes, and they had their blue and gold ceremony there last year, and they also used it for CPR training last spring. They were going to use it for the Pinewood Derby, but the road was about two feet too narrow.
Okay, so it seems like the door is a pretty big issue.
The front door is in very bad shape.
I have tried to close it myself.
I've asked people to improve the back, simply because I think too much pulling on the front door may eventually result in a panel coming out altogether. Chris Marano had said that she had had it repaired several times, several times, and it's in really bad shape. When you're standing inside the building, from all corners of panels, you can see the light coming in, in terms of keeping heat in, it's not doing much of a good job, and I'm more concerned that it need a security issue more than anything. When people leave, I've told them they can use, leave using the front door, but in order to get it to lock, you've gotta really give it a good slam, and I think that's probably further damaging it as time goes on. So I think that the door is probably the number one immediate issue that needs some type of addressing. And then for long-term planning purposes, the windows are not in good shape, there's a little bit of rotting, they're not holding heat in either. The building needs a paint job, which Chris has told me that it's been done a couple of times, and at this point, it would need to be completely stripped, but it's lead paint, so we get into a very big cost factor there, so the question becomes, do we pay to have it stripped and any clavards replaced that might need repair and then paint, or do we just strip it altogether and either shingle or buy new clavards? But then we have to get into the discussion of that would change the look of the building, and for historic preservation purposes, we need to think about what we want the building to look like. And then I'm not, I'm not real sure what condition the roof is in, there's no signs of any leakage currently, but I'm also not aware of when the last time the roof was replaced.
So considering it's all been ripped and pushed, it's been probably a year and a week, pulled lots out and spilled water, so it's probably changed all some, you know, compromised the bylaws somewhere.
So as far as doing the door work, I'm assuming you're thinking that needs to be a restoration, or?
Well, I mean, just to double check, the building is not eligible for the National Register. The survey work that's been done so far, sort of clearly goes in that direction, is not on the National Register at this point. The building is not in the local district, so there isn't exactly a committee to say, this is what you can and can't do with the building technically. Now that said, it is one of only a few sort of historic buildings that are town-owned, and to some extent, probably have sort of a responsibility to do the right thing. to do the right thing to it. Um, you know, I think, uh, in an ideal world, you know, in looking for a door, you probably wanna replace a little bit of the door. Um, but one that, you know, something that is really can be the requirements of the building for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, metal door will look like a metal door.
You gotta do a metal door.
They just, they don't look the same.
Uh-uh.
Um, uh, you know, and then you can also have a period hardware over there, so it actually has the appropriate locking mechanisms you need. And it's easy for people to use it. And I think that that door is definitely, um, an interesting one to be closed to make sure it's locked. Um, any of us who have been there at the end of the, end of, end of the evening, know that.
I don't blow up the door. I like it. Make sure they blow up the back door.
Yeah.
Kinda touch it out, but I like it.
So, I mean, I think, I think that's, you know, something that certainly, um, we should be able to find someone to be able to do that and to do it appropriately. Um, you know, it doesn't need to be the exact replica of the door, probably not, but we would want to, you know, it doesn't need to be, we clearly want something that fits. Right? Um, with respect to, um, you know, what to do with the building, um, to the extent that we use, uh, NCPA funds, now we're into a place where we're supposed to follow the Department of Interior standards for restoration, which gets a lot more stringent, as stringent as probably a local historic district or more. Um, so that, that is not undoable. And certainly, we've done projects there before. But you think about the projects we've done, they haven't affected the structure of the building per se. Um, so that's certainly an option, you know, in the future years to consider for that. You know, uh, even, even in fixing the building, you know, or repainting the building, if that were the route to go, you know, there's new products out there for primers that are a lot more expensive, but they actually work. So, you know, your basic primer goes on. People watch, still get some of it, and then it's done. Um, using a new primer that goes on it, um, apparently penetrates and seals the wood. And people have used it on buildings that look like that. And ten years later, the paint's still on, which I don't think we have the benefit of seeing that with this building. Because really, it's a lot, a lot of damage that goes into it. And, you know, if we were to move down the path of putting new clavards on and going to the motor, then it's sort of, that'd be something that we'd have to discuss in a way of different costs and options to try and make sure that we... We have, we have some, we have to balance the needs of sort of what the community can afford as well as, um, you know, trying to maintain historic character and goal. So, there's a lot of different ways to sort of see that.
So, is anybody moving to put this on a National Register? Or, and who would do that? Would it be the Historical Commission? Or would it be the Historic Society?
It is, it is on our list of, uh, shorter list of, of things to do. Um, depending on whether we have enough funds left from, uh, the current CTA project, we have to finish the survey. Uh, and then if there's some funds left there, we would like to pursue that with, uh, the area right around the townhouse, um, the Old Town House. Uh, because it would then open up the building for additional funds.
Right.
Um, part of the reason we put this townhouse onto the buildings at the old school in the front is on the National Register. And should be, if you do something there, you're actually eligible to, uh, matching state funds for renovation. If it's not actually on the register, it's not eligible. Even if the building is eligible itself. So, it's, it's one we realize would be very important long-term to have it there. And while it's generally, it's a, it's honorary notation when you're dealing with state or federally funded projects, you have some pretty important sale up. Which is why we're able to do some work if we need to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And be able to have some dictation of what could, could be done with sidewalks and car railings and, uh, bike channels. But for this building, it's honorary for access to those types of grants. But that process just typically, when you've submitted the application, it's probably...
Mm-hmm. It does seem to me that, um, one, you know, most of the things we've mentioned aren't very active right now. So, the, the building's not being used that much, except for the exercise group and, I don't know, maybe there's somebody else. So, one of the things would be, you know, if we're going to put all this money into it, which I think we have to, we also have to figure out, how do we, what should the building be utilized for? What activities can we sort of direct towards that? But I do think, I don't know, it would seem to me that the Historical Commission, along with yourself, maybe need to sit down and figure out a plan for where we wanna go with this in terms of the siding, the windows, the door, the paint, you know? We've got CPA funds, not this year, but we certainly next year would have the opportunity to get in line with that. But we don't have a plan and it's gotta meet your, you know, so the goals you want for the town.
I mean, ultimately, if it's, uh, it's a project because of CPA, it's still, the commission has to weigh in.
Sure. And that's rightly so. So, if we got the short-term thing, we oughta figure out how to get a door. But then, with a longer term, it seems like there's two branches. One is, how do we put more activities into the building itself? And then, how do we restore the building so it's, it's the right way to be?
I mean, I, this may not be accurate, but my unconscious is that there's a parameter of the community that does not know about the building, the shape of the building as it now.
I agree.
As the car is pitching, it's redone. And, I mean, it's, it's in some of the inside. It's in some of the best shape it's been.
Oh, it's beautiful, yeah, right.
And it's, and it's a nice, it's a nice space.
But there's also people in town who don't know what the use of it is for.
Right.
You know, and I think that's where we gotta also... We used to have the Plimpton Historical Society that had... Anybody who was in the Garden Club was in there.
Right.
There were a hundred, over a hundred people. I don't know how many there are now.
In the historic side, there are a hundred?
Yeah, yeah. So, they send in their dues, but, you know, we've got a lot of other things that we could probably point towards that. I'd just like to see it used more. And then I think we'd have more community support for doing the building over at the same time.
One frustration that I have with the building is that there is no Wi-Fi. And when I had first taken over from Chris, from Chris Morano, I kind of had vision of maybe having some genealogy courses and teaching people how to research and use documents. And, um, there's no access. And whereas there's no files in the area, the only place to get it from is Comcast. And the amount of money it would cost, we just simply don't have the funds available to maintain the monthly expense, especially not knowing whether or not having Wi-Fi would bring people into the building on a regular enough basis to justify having it paying for an ancestry dot com or a library version of that program. Um, so, I think there's, there's a lot of ways to get people into the building.
I know...
I just need a little bit of guidance as to...
Well, how effects...
What direction the town would like to see the building go? What purposes they want it used for? And really, in terms of the money that Elizabeth Denit left, left behind, I don't have access to that. It's Chris Morano oversees that. And I've never seen any of the literature regarding what her intentions were. Um, my understanding is that she did not want it used for, um, regular maintenance and upkeep and, and bills, that it was supposed to be improvements for the building.
Right.
Now, how she quantified that, I'm not entirely aware.
It would seem that a new door would fit under, under that.
Yeah, Chris said there was nothing in writing. And I have the, the trust documents. And I, I don't believe it's in anyone's name. It might be in Chris's name because she opened the, the trust, but, um...
It's in Chris's name right now for signing authority.
Just for signing authority, but we could certainly get that changed.
Yeah. The question is, who should it rest with?
I would think with Jessica.
I think, we're in a Historical Society, but I think it should be a panel of people. I don't think it should be in any one person's name.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Personally...
Phil, you had a...
Man, I'm just curious.
I don't know that I want that.
That responsibility...
To go back to the original question, you got the door. Have you gotten any idea what that money cost to replace? Properly, like, whatever you want as the historical?
I have not looked into it with, um, carpenters who would do restoration, so...
Oh, it's, I mean, it's an instant, I mean, I don't think you're restoring the door. If it's about a shape as you're, as you're saying, it's a matter of just making sure you've specced out a door with similar, similar style. You know, make sure that it stands open or replace it within the jam that's there.
Well, it's since that's, I mean, I, I bring that up only cause it's the most immediate problem that you brought up. And there is, we have building and grounds money that we could probably use if it's not, you know, an outrageous amount of money. And the other thing is, cause you're, it's not on the historic register yet, huh? Not, it's not...
No, you have to go and put it on to the...
Yeah, and, and you said that's twelve to eighteen months?
Well, twelve to eighteen months after you've submitted the application, which you have to pay them, I know. So, I mean, that typically, like, we, it cost us, um, I think it was close to just under five thousand to do the full application and all of the research that needs to go into it. Uh, that said, when we did the survey of that area, a consultant that we hired did a lot of the footwork for that. So, our hope is, is that it would be a lesser cost. So, that's why we have to see how much money we have left to be able to, if we can tack that on to the sort of final survey work that needs to be done in the south part of town and tack that in as part of one final bid for the last project. Then we get that, and then it's, then you're entered. Once it's submitted, you're at twelve to eighteen month process.
Cause then you become eligible for the MPF grants, which is a fifty, the state commission grant, which is fifty percent matching. And if you, if you, um, if you analyze, you know, I mean, had it assessed, what's wrong? What do you have to do with the building if it's a roof? Or whatever you want to do, siding, whatever it have, windows, whatever it happens to be. And get together an approximate price for that. You could apply for the grant. And then if you pool it all into one bunch, it hits the capital thresholds for the, um, capital savings account. So, it could be done, you know, it could be done that way. And at least get the cost down to about half. Although it wouldn't be inexpensive because historical restoration never is inexpensive.
No, and, and if you're going with the, particularly if you're going with state ones too, they're gonna very much be making sure that you're following...
Oh, absolutely.
...the standards of Department of Interior, which are, which are restore. You start with restore, and somewhere down at the bottom is replace.
I mean, the other possibility is just to have it, you know, have it, have it evaluated to see, you know, to get a rough idea of what it's gonna cost. And then you've got a number to work off of later on, you know? And if we pool it, again, if we pool it all as one, I mean, you couldn't really get the door in cause the threshold in that account is ten thousand dollars. But if you put it all on...
Yeah, I think the door is a separate issue.
I'm just saying, you know, small things. But if you put it together as a project to do, you know, doors, windows, roof, paint, whatever you need, um, then the threshold inside that project is, uh, is, it's easily met. It's ten years or five years, ten thousand or five years. That's what I mean.
I think, I think that any one of those projects, if you move roof, might be a little bit, either you're dealing with siding, if you have to deal with siding, or if you're doing a full strip and restore. Or whether you're doing just the windows, it's a fault of us, it may be lower than that.
At my, at my last position, we did a MPF grant and painted a building probably about, I'm gonna say thirty percent larger than this building here. And, um, we actually got a fairly good price on it, but it was still in the twenty-three thousand dollar range, if I remember. And that was basically bring it back to, bring it back to wood, put the magic sealers on it, especially where it, and then come back up with a coat of primer and get your coats of finish paint. Um, just to give you an idea of where those numbers come in.
And that was just, that was a few years ago, so...
Uh, that was actually like, I've been here six years. That was actually more like eight, nine years.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, either one of those five guys, probably with all three, would, you think it was separate? Also, then, well, with ten thousand?
We've, we've got some, uh, good craftspeople in this town. It's somehow, we oughta be able to get a couple of them to go in and take a look at the building and give us some feedback on, I mean, we've gotta do the door, so let's do the door. I don't know. But independent of that, we oughta have, somebody just walk through and make sure, take a look at the roof, the windows. If we're gonna do it, we oughta do it as one, it would seem to me. Off the top of my head, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but that's why you would have these people come back and say...
You're right. I restored the triangle window that's over the door. The first year I was in town, brought that in the cellar. We made a new frame on the inside and reblazed it, some broken pieces. Probably did it the old-fashioned way and painted it with oil-based paint. But a door is a different thing. It's definitely difficult.
Well, I mean, looking at the other projects, the only reason that it might not make sense to put them together is to how much money it might actually be. You know, if you think about how much time it took to redo that window, yeah.
But that's an easy decision, once we're, once we've got the figures.
You're gonna evaluate, and you evaluate all three at the same time.
Yeah.
And then you can figure out how it best to put it together.
So, the thing that we can actually start working on now is the door. So, I would suggest that you and your committee get together and solicit some bids on...
The Historical Commission can help out, but the Historical Commission cannot, in the interest of maintaining...
No, 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 I, I was...
Certainly gonna help out as we can. I'm sure we can find some folks to, uh, to people in line, I'm sure we can find some folks to, either to people in line as you might think, that we can have to come to the building and take a look and provide some guidance on what we're thinking about, even just very high level ideas of what we would take for various things. And then build the plan of how to sort of build that out because clearly one thing we wanted to add and no one's going to think this is a great idea, that we need to at least look at it because this part of the process is we have to get close both to the window perspective, both for new windows that would be on maintenance, that would be as close as we can get to what we need for there. But also to have, we have, there's a few people in the state who are very successful businesses doing this, where they restore old windows. They pick them and they restore them and they bring it back and you end up with a very similar, if not the same, energy savings from them. In their current situation, they're useless. But we get the prices and therefore we can assess that. If it ends up being twice as much, then that becomes mitigating factors in how we let go with new as it as is, you know, maintenance factor. So, we look at these different.
In the short term, can you help with the door?
Um, I mean, I can reach out and see if there's some folks who can come and take a look at it and sort of get us get us on the right way. I don't know whether they have any time to do it, but I know a couple of people that we can have count at least and direct what might be possible given the size of the door and all that and then try and solicit somebody who can actually do it.
And somebody who would actually look around at the frame and everything because it may not just be a door problem, it may be.
That's what, that's what I mean, get a very quick understanding of what it is we actually need to do.
And get a price and then we can see if it comes out of.
I think we'd be very thankful to make sure we're on the right place, whether they can do the work themselves. You know, make sure we have the right information.
So, then as far as the Bennett money, I think that you're smart not wanting to be the sole controller of this, but.
And I think it strongly belongs in the historical society and we should not be part of the town. I think that's that's an important thing. Yeah, make sure that we get sort of that Jason folks family and see if we can get a committee together.
Yeah, we really need a board of directors for the.
Yeah.
I have two people on the way, so.
Okay.
I promise at the spring meeting that we're planning that they will step forward as a treasurer and a secretary.
Okay, great. So, if we get that, now we've got the nucleus of being able to pass over this.
Perfect.
And then I think as far as the lease, I mean, I do think we could get some clarity there. I think, you know, there's certainly, you know, wear and tear because renting out the building, that certainly would belong in there and even, you know, putting together and trying to find funding for these different projects, I can answer that, but, you know, it's the well that's needing well. That seems to me is a above and beyond, it's sort of the basic.
Yeah, that's capital improvement.
It's something that we should, we should be making sure that we have some clear definition. And it doesn't mean that that the historical society might not be able to say, well, I know we need this, but we can help out with this, but town needs to put in some too, which has been done on some projects. Certainly getting the parking lot sorted out for town can help get that done. And now there's actually a bunch of parking lot, crafts, negative dirt, if you have reasonable parking there and, you know, it's moves well that way, but big expenses like that, there's just a lot to do, so they're going to have to done.
Do you think you could have a rough estimate of the cost to address all of the building issues that there currently are, so it's something we could include in the CIP plan that we're working on with Collins Group?
Uh, it can be tried for, but I think it's just, you know, asking a couple of contractors to put numbers together.
That's fine, just so we have something.
Be difficult.
Okay.
Give you baseline, well, we could do a baseline thing.
Let's do, yeah.
You want that by the fifteenth?
If possible. Do you think we could have that within, what, two weeks? Fifteenth is next week. One week, week and a half?
Wow.
Yeah, just ballpark, because we didn't include this before, but if this is something that we're going to realign who is responsible for what, we need to include it in our plan just so that we can address it.
So, basically, you're going to look about doing something about the door more immediately. You're going to get a, when is your spring meeting?
We're scheduling it for the end of March. If the weather continues to not be like a real winter, we'll be able to stick with that. If not, it'll get pushed out.
Okay, so then we'll just keep the checking accounts as there now until you have your meeting and formalize something with your board.
Yeah, because Chris could sign something to to replace the door.
Yeah. And anything else?
Well, I guess Dale said we could even maybe take it out of the building funds we have.
Well, we could, but but this account is for that purpose, so I would think we.
We have money available to, you know, I mean, some money available. I mean, and that's not going to be an inexpensive door because it's pretty much going to be a custom fit. And I think I agree with John, I think as soon as you pull that door out of there, there are going to be sills and frames and all of that stuff you'll have to do with it, so it won't be inexpensive, but.
Well, maybe it would be a combination.
Bottom line is, the building has to be maintained one way or the other. So, I would just start with the door and if it's if it's if it's several thousand dollars, we can probably put that together out of building and grounds. If it's more than that or for some other reason, we can do a special article.
This is from September and it's thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars. So, I think that.
Let's get a plan. And, you know, ask them as to what they can do and.
Let's get her done.
Great. And then the only other thing, since I'm a neighbor, could you tell your groups to turn the lights off at night? It is very irksome.
It is, I share in your frustration because I have a friend who drives by around nine o'clock, ten o'clock at night and will text me and say the lights are on.
Yeah, and and there actually have been times that I've gone over and turned them off at some nights I don't want to go from back there and.
Maybe that's something we should look at as well, that we should replace the switches.
Yeah.
With what, a timer?
Motion.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So that, you know, there's any number of things and it's not, we're not talking about huge money, but if that's a perpetual issue.
That would pay for itself almost immediately.
Having, what do we have, fluorescent lights in there? And incandescents?
I think.
I would want to look at whether we want to get. The incandescents and and first, I mean, you can even replace. Now, you can replace fluorescent tubes with W two, so it'll be more efficient. So, it's all part of the thing, it's, you know, gets that cost down over time. But if we have an issue with getting the white stuff, then we need to get those things off.
We also have an issue with people locking doors. So, I appreciate a little bit of guidance from the town as to where they stand in terms of the current policy for accessing the building.
Well, I mean, I, I would, let me do this. I would suggest that there's some things we can do to help with that. I don't think this is something that's on the camera.
That's what, well, that's, yes.
I do, I would like to see a combination, you know, like the real estate people use for they ever put a box for the combination?
Yeah.
So that.
You can also, you can also get, you know, door locks that the combination is in the door. It's actually, and they, they, I used one, we rented a flat in DC last winter and it was actually beautifully built into the door, you didn't even see it. So, if you look at it, it looks like a regular thing, but there's actually a black keypad, that's a flat touchpad, you touch it and it'll light, it lights up. And then you enter the combo right there, it unlocks the door. You can open the door, you can go in and the door locks behind you.
We, we know we need something that's different from what we've got.
Yes.
So, there's this, I think there's any number of options and as far as dealing with that door, that would probably be a good thing. And then what you do something different with the back door.
So, do we just get to have this or get it back to Chris?
Then you can control.
I don't think Chris wants it.
Say, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and yeah, she didn't want it either.
Sort it out.
Nobody wants it. That's why I ended up with it. Bree, would you start a file and put that in it? And where's the checkbook? There is no checkbook as far as I know.
Well, you have your own checkbook, right, for this.
I have a checkbook, we have a small checking account for bills and then the separate funds I understand is in a CD.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know.
Transfer into the check.
Okay.
So, I don't know what the maturity.
Madam Chair, just a question on those funds.
Funds would become available.
Okay, excuse me for a moment.
Just a question on those funds. I'm assuming that Mrs. Bennett left those in her will to the town. Is that how that came by?
She left them to the, this, the funds that Chris Morano apparently has were left to the historicals.
It's not, it's not.
It was before she passed, I believe.
In her estate, no, that's what, I'm just trying to figure, if it's in her estate, I can get you a copy of her will and that'll tell, that'll give you all the legal stuff you need to know about what she intended, if anything special. I mean, it's just, it's just down on the probate court.
That'd be great to actually.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Make sure we're all level set.
Yeah, well, I mean, that that makes it, you know, in other words, you know what her intentions were, so, you know, you can go from there. But, yeah, I'll make a, I'll make a note and I will run down there someday and see if I can pick it up. Somebody's got to provide me with her full name and maybe date of death would be handy.
You could actually call Terry Patterson. He might have that information. Do you know Terry? Okay. Are we good?
I think so.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thanks, guys.
More to come.
Yeah.
Okay, so Terry Patterson is Honey Patterson's husband. Honey Patterson was Elizabeth Bennett's niece who lived in town and Terry still lives in town.
Right, well, in terms of her date of death, if I get her name, that's in the town clerk's office. So, that's all I need.
All right.
And then after that, it's just a matter of looking up the probate number and pulling the probate number. It's all public, her will will be there and whatever she said with the money is fine and just copy the relevant parts.
She gave to her a number of different things, like the church, so.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, perfect.
But, I mean, it's a fairly easy do, so I will definitely do that.
Okay.
All right, good, thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.
Bye bye.
That's just a, a file in your drawers for the historical society.
And right now, it's Chris, it's like they'll be the designers once they do a meeting.
Once, once she organize, then we'll make a decision around transferring that. And Chris isn't leaving very soon anyways. I talked to her today.
She's the president of the.
She's here for a couple of months and more anyways.
I never saw her. Six years of spilling people's faces.
Okay.
Okay.
Follow up on townhouse security, that was just to make sure that that panic button has been put in place and the committee chair is notified?
Yeah, but.
Okay, we're good. I was just waiting for the new stuff to come in.
Yeah.
Anything on the technology grant?
Still waiting for Michael Rodriguez to get back to me. He did an inventory and also was getting quotes. I don't know, Dale, were you going to get a quote from Akers on the projector?
No, I can, I can. I actually got one earlier for for this room, I believe. It was around five thousand dollars, but I made for the whole.
Can you pull that out?
But I'll find it.
Yeah. So, you know, hopefully next week I'll have some sort of a draft, but it's.
Should we look at wiring the historical society?
His.
It's a tough one because, I mean, we own the building, but we.
Yeah, but there's also another issue. There is a genealogy club at Halifax, okay? It contains Plimpton people. They run it through the library. We haven't, we didn't do it through the library because the cost of the ancestry package didn't fit into the library's budget.
Okay.
Okay? And I would think if we were going to move in that direction, we'd want to talk to the library as well as the historical. The library is, as you know, gets used constantly. And the genealogy club they run out of Halifax meets every, the first Wednesday of every month. And they have anywhere from twenty to twenty-five people.
Wow.
So, it's.
It's funded by the club.
What do you mean it's funded by the club?
The, the software and.
No, it's funded by the library.
The library, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, the library has the ancestry package on all their computers. So, you can go there and you can, you know, and what makes it nice is you can email anything you find to yourself. Now, if we were going to do that, given that the historical society is basically inactive except for the exercise programs, it would seem to me that the library might at, at least right now, make the more, more sense than the other way. But that's something I think we need to talk out and I think they need to, Jessica needs to get a board of directors together so we know where they're going.
And, yeah, and become more active again.
Right, but that would be a neat draw to that building.
Might be, yeah.
If they had the, then you'd have the hardware too and the software.
You know, see, when you walk in the Halifax, you can go right to the computer and do your research and then go to meetings.
Hours are great, yeah.
Yeah.
And we used to have hours where this building was open and there was a historian.
Yeah, and he's sort of given up on that.
I think the cost of Wi-Fi down there is about ninety-five dollars a month.
That's pretty steep.
So, twelve hundred dollars a year for.
You know, if it was really active, it might make sense, but not the way this is being used.
Yeah, not right now.
Yeah.
Okay, scratch that. Bad idea.
Okay, for a weekly report, we had the basic utilities, the newspaper. We had a payment to Webby Engineering for the site survey here and we had another, that was six thousand seven hundred dollars and a payment to the owner's project manager of two thousand dollars. And that was it on the good expenses.
Excuse me, the area fifty-eight invoice came in along with the payment.
So, you want me to sign that?
Yes, that would be all of these. You didn't sign.
Okay, so they're not on the list, but they're.
Just that one, contact one, fourteen there.
Okay, um, town coordinator report.
Okay, email server update, we're.
Yes, that's really, we're waiting for Michael.
As for an update on the responses, I have one, two, well, one inquiry and one response to the townhouse custodian, selling the town car, just getting the information on that now, so that will probably go in the paper next Friday, which is this tenth or tenth or seventeenth.
Tenth will be this Sunday Friday.
Yeah, so it will go in on the seventeenth, that's right, because it's, you got to have it on Monday, right?
It's in the.
Yeah, so I'm, yeah, I'm about to give you that ad, but it's not, I just got the information from the fire chief today on the particulars for the vehicle.
Okay, so Deb just said if you get it, get her to, get it to her tomorrow, so we'll put it in this week.
Okay, I'll try. If I, if I, if I don't, but I'll try. He was going to forward me that tomorrow. And before I get into the budget projections, let me get to the rest of the stuff on the list. We're in the process now, it's actually the Colonial Power, the aggregation agreement that we did, that's in the process right now. Colonial Power, the Commonwealth is holding, Department of Public Utilities is holding a hearing, kind of a formality hearing, the last about fifteen minutes in Boston. They're holding that on March twentieth and we had to go through the, it has to be advertised in Boston papers. They're picking Colonial pays for all of that and does that. Our obligation was to basically sign for it, post it here, put it on the website, which is done already. And so, just that is proceeding nicely and we should be getting aggregations.
When that's ready to go, will we have a press release?
We can.
Yeah, somebody who can take, I looked at some of the documents, I think you had forwarded, you know, we need to take some of the legalese out so when people get it.
Yeah, I, you know, I can, I mean, I can request that from Colonial, they'll, they'll give me. They're very, I mean, they picked up and ran with most all of the, all of the logistics.
We could probably even get them in for a, a meeting.
Sure.
To, you know, what to expect, this is.
It'd be nice to put something up on the web that we don't have to keep getting calls.
Sure.
What does that mean?
Well, it actually goes by direct mail to everybody in town.
Yeah, okay.
My town did it about six months ahead of us and I just got the direct mail thing for it at home.
So, everybody's in, but you have to opt out if you don't want to participate.
Correct, unless somebody has another supplier, they're not notified, although I was notified and I have, I have, I have Mass Electric and I, Constellation was who I chose to get cheap electricity from. And we're not supposed to notify those people, they weren't going to notify, but they did. So, anyway, it's still there because my contract is up with Constellation, so now it's, which one is cheaper. But they're, it's very good and it should be, it should save people a fair amount of money. Responses, car ads, the seventeenth aggregation. I was approached about two weeks ago by the Commonwealth. And I think the particular version of the state alphabet, but in any event, they're, this is the group that handles promotions for corporations in terms of bringing people to Massachusetts and working on the TIPS taxing, incentive financing, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, they approached me and told me that there was a company that was going to get in touch with me, that's the background on it. I got a call from a lawyer, you, just to go back, I think it may have been six months ago, Light Control was bought by a Fortune 500 company. And that company is actually closing a plant in Pennsylvania, outside of Philadelphia. And what they want to do is they want to move that whole operation to Light Control, to Plimpton.
Right.
But they're also looking for, you know, some, some assistance from the state and also they're look, probably going to look to the local town for maybe a taxing, incentive finance and so on and so forth. They're talking in terms of creating eighty-three new jobs at the site and bringing in about ten million dollars worth of, basically, private property which would be taxable.
So, they're going to add on to the building?
Uh, they may do some modifications and a minor add on to the building, but I don't think they're going to make the building that much bigger. He wasn't sure exactly how they did, but their main thing is they're going to bring in, they're moving a lot of equipment, it's manufacturing equipment, they're doing LED lighting, that's the hot number these days. And that's what they're, this division of the company is doing, that's what they're doing there now and they're going to move it. And out of the eighty-three jobs that come in, very few of them are going to be transfers, they're all going to be new hires here because they figure most of the people in Pittsburgh are not going to move, you know, move to the area. So, he approached me and he said, would, you know, anybody be interested? And I said, well, the board's pretty open, I'm sure they'd want to discuss it with you. So, I'm, I told him I would give him a call tomorrow morning and let him know, board would like to discuss it. The company that's doing all of this at this point wishes to remain kind of anonymous until there's actually something, you know, until actually something breaks. But certainly a good opportunity and eighty-three new jobs in any area is pretty good.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, we ought to be talking to, they have close to, I went out there and talked to the vice president there and I, the number that sticks with me is it was somewhere between seventy and eighty acres. So, they have a lot of land. I'll get the exact number because I'm, that's just off the top of my head, but it, it surprised me when I asked, you know, and they had no intent to do anything. The inside is highly automated, so even though it's eighty-three jobs, in terms of the production, it may be really quite a bit bigger. Now, they do have a tenant in there, so I'm not sure how that would play, whether that's.
Again, those are questions, you know, you can ask me.
This could be a great opportunity.
And there are, you know, there's a couple of ways, I mean, they want to get, they're, the state has given them, the states, they have to have their application finalized with the state by April, I believe it is, and then there's a secondary application that goes in in June. So, you know how there's things, these things crawl along until something drops in place and then boom, everybody's rushing. Well, they obviously want to meet as soon as possible with the board just to discuss this whole thing. So, you can do it as you can send one representative to meet with them or you can hold a session. And again, I can, I can work it out, you know, and have them come in. Representatives of the company want to come, they'll bring their attorney, who's a gentleman from Atlanta. It's a man I talked to on Friday. We had a great discussion about football, if you can imagine, because he's from Atlanta, and I was from Massachusetts. But anyway, beyond that, he's.
Yeah, why don't you find out how they want to approach it, and then we can see.
All right, and then, I mean, mainly, we would be talking probably in the evening for the whole, to get the whole board together to discuss this.
Okay, it could not be in executive session, so if they want to keep anonymity.
Well, again, we'll, I'll discuss.
Yeah, figure out what they, what they want.
They know, this is a huge corporation, I was really surprised when he threw the name at me, they've been around for a lot of years. So, just an opportunity, certainly something to look at, and again, they were talking about not necessarily making the building bigger, but bringing in ten, or ten to fifteen million dollars worth of new manufacturing equipment.
That would be nice.
Which does get taxed as personal property, so that's what they're looking for, you know, this is something.
So, when you talk to them, you'll ask them if they're going to come in with an MOA, or, you know, how this is going to progress? And I think that we would want to possibly hire a consultant at their expense to, to do a study on the taxes, and what sort of incentives we might want to offer them, if any, and, you know, a pilot kind of.
The state's more than willing to work on, work with the town on this, with the local town. They're, I mean, obviously, they're very, you know, they're very eager to bring in new jobs in the Commonwealth.
Sure, sure.
So, they're, they're going to be, are probably one of our better resources, they're, the company is filed with them. But when, you know, when that comes in, I mean, I think we can, you know, I think we can get some pretty good information.
We need to just hear what they're, what they're all about.
Yeah, what the plan is.
Yeah, he was going to send me some stuff, I don't have it yet, I hope, electronically, when he does, I'll just disseminate it to the board. And I will talk with him tomorrow, and then I will call the, my contact at the Commonwealth. And we'll have a lot more information coming down, but basically, the board's in favor of.
Yeah, and wouldn't we have any information, would be able to acquire any information about what other sites they may be considering?
You mean nationally?
No, in Massachusetts. Is Plimpton it?
I believe Plimpton is it, because that's why they bought Light Control, you know, as a, they want to have a manufacturing facility in this area.
I think one of the things, when you see the operation, is the expertise these people have in automation. I would imagine that's what's drawing them, which if they went to another place, they wouldn't, wouldn't be available.
Right, and I mean, at that level of automation, they're going to bring in eighty-three people, I mean, even if they brought in fifty people, it would, you know, that's a lot of people.
It's a lot of people.
For a manufacturing operation, so, we'll see what happens, but it certainly seems like a good opportunity, and a good opportunity for the community. But, you know, the devil is in the details.
Yeah, it's very exciting.
All right, I will keep informed on that, when he sends me that electronic package, I will forward it to everybody.
Good, thank you.
And the only other, you have it in here, is.
One thing before the budget deal, you're going to have a meeting with the Cava Town Manager, did that ever get set up?
Yep, we did.
And where was the?
Well, he, he wants to pursue it, he's been asking me for some information, but he has a big, you know, a much bigger picture of how to possibly do it and save money. And he's asked me for some information, I know the Collins Report, you know, the CIP that Collins did, I mean, he, he asked me.
Why don't you sit down and tell us, I mean, so that we can figure out whether we want to pursue this.
I mean, there's some, there's some detail, yeah, somebody ought to just come in, you know, whoever wants to, and then you can, and I, I will, I'll put it the form of an email, where it stands there. I mean, he's discussed it with his board, and I, initially, and I haven't really, I haven't really brought it up yet, because I've got a lot of other things going, but no specific plan, just, just an overview of how money is possibly saved, you know.
Well, I'd like to hear about it, because we're, you know, we've reached out to Halifax, and we're going to reach out to them again shortly to start talking, so.
Yeah, I mean, he, he's talking in terms of more, more of a, of a much bigger merger between the two towns on a lot of levels.
If he wants to join Cava, Plimpton, you know.
Yeah, and I'm not sure exactly how you would do that, but I mean, I think, first of all, there's probably going to be some, you know, there would be some state money available to at least study that, because.
We've got to hear them, I don't know what's.
Well, I mean, you've got to go forward with it.
So, write out a report?
Yeah, I'll, I will send you where it stands at this point. If somebody wants to come in, I can explain it to them too, but I haven't, I hadn't done that yet, I just, he got back to me today, he's looking for some more information. You know, any enrollments in schools and so on.
Let us know what he's asking for, before we start sharing a lot of stuff.
And the other is the budget, selectmen's budget, have it done, I just requested the electronic forms from Susan Ossoff today, so I can fill them out and send them back through that way. But, I mean, there's several, there's several issues in there, I don't have it in, I mean, you know, because under, are you a budget? I'm talking coordinator, but now you're talking administrator, so that's different, so I need to know from the board where that, I know you have a meeting on that, I just need to know where that goes. I mean, are you, what the salary range is going to be, whether you're offering, or whether you're intending to bump clerical hours, or assistant hours to go with that, and so on and so forth. Other than that, it's going to be fairly level budget, fairly level budget going forward. We're not going to, we're not going to really, we've been in pretty good shape for the last three years in terms of the selectmen's budget, and I don't see any major increases. Other than, you should have the discussion about town council, you know, and whether you want to raise that line item, or you want to keep it where it is.
I do want to see it broken down by major line items. I know that Susan, you know, they give us these forms, but for us to really understand it, we need to see the pieces.
Well, I have, it's broken down, I mean, I have, I have last year's, but it's broken down, I mean, under each line item, what portion, because she wanted it that way last year. And again, I have it, in other words, you know, under selectmen's expense, there's selectmen assistant salary, dues and memberships, office supplies.
Those are the pieces I want to see.
Notices and hearings and miscellaneous, and they're all in there. Again, rather than filling it out with a pen, I was trying to get the electronic copy, so I can just put it, you know, do it electronically, and then everybody can have their copy. But, you know, again, at this point, I'm leaving coordinator blank, and we'll have to add a line for administrator, if we can do that by seventeen. And then, needs to know what the numbers are going to be, because I have no idea.
Okay.
And that is.
All right, so hopefully, they'll get you the electronic copy soon, and.
Yeah, all the information's there, all she's got to do is get it to me, I can just fill it in and send it right out. I just figured I would do it that way, rather than, there's too much paper in the world.
Well, and then she's got to enter it, it's just, yeah.
Right, this way there, it's, it's all right there for the sheet. And I believe that's it for me.
Okay, and correspondence?
What is this? I don't even know what I'm doing.
We have to make that appointment.
Do we have a regular appointment sheet that has dates on it, or?
Debree was going to make that for us.
Bree? So is this just for a year?
Yeah, and John's got the other part of it.
Is this the other part?
Yeah.
So we're going to leave it as it is?
As it is.
And, but we can change the, at any time.
Correct.
So, motion to appoint Frank Bush as our animal control officer for a year?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
That one might be the inspector of animals.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Did you pop that thing over, as it said?
Animal control officer.
Same thing. Is it just a copy?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we just need to sign this, and then get it back in? All right, if I send this form.
Okay, well, we're signing this paper, which is what we need for the state, so.
And then, you appointed on ours, like, for us.
Right.
And that's, she's going to go.
So we just voted on that, and that's.
I'm not sure, have you read this? I'm not sure if we're entering into something with these people.
Okay, I did not see this, so I'll.
Signature, municipal department, Shane Gives Thanks Inc., Food Pantry. Bree, what's our mailing address? Is it an appeal box?
Our, no, it's my problem.
Okay.
I don't see this as them asking the town for anything. I think they're using the words, the town of Plimpton, as residents who may need, that's my understanding. Yes, she called today. So this is just a notification that there is a food pantry in Carver called Shane Gives Thanks Inc. To participate in the use of the food pantry, you would need to prove need.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, and she knew, she found out that we currently don't have a food pantry for Plimpton, so she was reaching out to the Plimpton residents now.
Right.
That they can.
And they can use the Halifax, we did have one here, and it was not used, so we were throwing food out. So maybe you could post the sign on the bulletin board, and.
Yes, and I also saw that.
You just need to write and sign now.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, you might, yeah, show it to Deb, yeah, yeah, that'd be great. This is a letter from the Mass Department of Transportation, relative to the bridge at Main Street, Winnetou Tuxit River. So this was what we discussed with James Mokke.
You just said Main Street.
Well, they say Main Street over the Winnetou Tuxit.
Well, that's a completely different bridge.
Different bridge.
Which one's that?
That's on fifty-eight.
Yeah, that's on fifty-eight.
The one that we discussed last week was up on.
Downstreet, downstreet?
It was on Winnetou Tuxit Road.
It was on Winnetou Tuxit Road.
By Pope's Hill, Pope's Farm Road, that area. Yeah, the Winnetou Bridge.
What are they saying about that? They own that bridge, so.
Major city. Closed for your information is a copy of an underwater inspection report for the bridge that carries this fifty-eight Main Street over the Winnetou Tuxit River.
Okay, so it's just a report, yeah.
Copy of the report is on file at District Five.
Everything passed, as I could tell.
It's broke, they have to.
Yeah. Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. This is relative to the Community Preservation Act surcharge funds collected in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen through sixteen. The Registry of Deeds is responsible for collecting the Community Preservation Act surcharges on documents filed at our office. These surcharges in two thousand sixteen amounted to two million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, which is forwarded to the Commonwealth on a monthly basis. I've attached a list of surcharge amounts collected in filings for property in each community for two thousand and twelve to two thousand and sixteen. The amounts collected in two thousand and sixteen ranged from twelve thousand, three hundred and ten dollars for Plimpton, to three hundred and thirteen thousand, seven four hundred, seven hundred and forty dollars for Plymouth. And there is a sheet that shows all these surcharges by town for the South Shore.
So in Plymouth County, you are the lowest?
Yeah, we're the, the small guy.
We are.
This is a letter from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services, Department of Children and Families. It tells about how there are approximately nine thousand children in Massachusetts who are residing in out-of-home placements, such as foster homes, foster homes, group homes, and residential schools. They have a volunteer case review. So it says, I am reaching out to your community in the hope that some of you will become involved in reviewing the plans of the children in your area who are foster home and, in foster homes and other residential programs. We currently, presently have a need for volunteer case reviewers in your area, and we greatly appreciate you spreading the word of our need. Maybe Deb, you could also put this in the paper. And the Plimpton Halifax Express, Friday, Feb.
February thirty.
February third. An article on the Assistant Assessor, Saliree Owley. Another article on the Plimpton Board of Health about the, some of the issues at two Center Street properties, one fifty-seven and one sixty-three. And let's see.
There was a notice of public hearing, you might want to just, ZBA hearing.
Tough loss for Lakers girls basketball. And zoning board of appeals, public hearing notice for Tuesday, February fourteenth, at the townhouse Palmer Road. And this is for a property located at Maple Street.
And also, there are two, there's one at Maple Street and one for Lake Street.
One for Lake Street, so both of those are.
Good, thank you. Oh, yeah.
CBC, in here?
Tomorrow night. And that's about the gazebo project? It is a very good project.
Oh, oh.
Right there.
Okay. Conservation Commission Notice of Public Hearing. Yeah, I think so.
I do remember reading it somewhere.
And also an ad for the Town of Plimpton Board of Health Administrative Assistant, if anybody's interested.
Okay, so, minutes for last week. Yeah, just pass it over, we'll sign it, we've already voted on it, so.
Is it just the one for the animal control officer, and not the?
We need to do both, the inspector of animals as well.
And then, because she said the inspector of animals is still valid.
Okay, so then we can hold off on that.
Okay, that's right, I knew that there was a two.
Okay. Okay, no, just the animal control officer, which we already voted, and it's an appointment for a year, so we just sign it.
Let me see.
Just wanted to make sure, I knew that there was.
It's funny that they're not on the same timeframe.
Yeah.
I remembered it from last year, when I did it.
Okay, so, minutes from last week, does anyone have amendments?
I've got a lot of little.
I have things.
I haven't even had a chance to read them, to tell you the truth.
Do you want to pass it over until next week?
Um, well, I can quickly read them, does, either one of you have a hard copy?
I'll just do the English stuff.
Well, mine, both. Well, Christine reads, let me list off the dates to remember. So our next meeting is next week, the thirteenth. The Public Safety Building Committee meets, that says Tuesday on the agenda, it's Wednesday of this week. There's a dog hearing at our meeting next week.
And did they get an official notice from us?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
There's a meeting with the Collins Group next Wednesday, the fifteenth. The townhouse will be closed on President's Day, the twentieth.
Your DOR advisory is meeting also on the fifteenth?
Perfect.
Yes.
DOR, yeah.
Yeah.
It's really the same thing.
I did a post.
Yeah, that's perfect, thank you.
And I posted for the board of faculty that attended that meeting?
Christine and I will be.
Mm-hmm, yes, the DOR advisory committee is Christine and John and Susan Ossoff. So now that they're both selectmen, it has to be posted as a selectmen's meeting as well.
Yeah, so I did two.
Good.
Okay.
Great. Oh, I know what's going to. We had the issue with the dog on Ring Road last week, with Jane Schultz.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, and in the minutes, it talks about the quarantine of the dog. But it wasn't clear to me, I don't remember the meeting. Vicky Alberti, who has worked with Dr. Russo's office, mentioned that since the dog wasn't vaccinated, that she thought the dog had to be quarantined for six months. I don't know if we ever followed up on that, or what's.
I did, I sent Frank a email asking him to have the dog quarantined until the hearing, and that to please implement any of the protocols that were required, because the dog wasn't vaccinated, so.
Just crossed my mind, I wasn't sure where we stood.
Okay, so, you still reading my?
I am, but we can, we can go.
Yeah.
Frank issued another fourteen day.
Yes.
Yes, so that the dog is restrained until the hearing.
Okay, first bullet, the wording is suggesting to restrict the weight limit of the wooden bridge on Winnetou Tuxit Road, this would restrict heavy trucks. I just changed it to suggesting that the weight limit on the wooden bridge on Winnetou Tuxit be restricted to lighter vehicles, prohibiting heavy trucks. be restricted to lighter vehicles, prohibiting heavy trucks. In the next bullet, position is actually in the sentence twice, specification of the position of assistant assessor position. So, I was just taking one out. Time is not compliant with, town is not compliant with state protocol, the position being hourly or salary is the issue. We wrote that to say the town council, David Jenkins, was consulted and advised that in order for the town to be in compliance with state regulations, the position should be changed from salary to hourly. John's name was a typo. Just forgot the N, or we can call you Joe.
I was shocked.
I'm sorry, I need to join you.
The motion was not to give me time with town council after receiving the amended payroll from the assistant assessor, but rather, the chair of the Board of Assessors was going to review Attorney Jenkins' letters, and if he had more questions, he was going to come back to me for passing them on, too. So, I rewrote that.
We already tagged this one?
Another typo, NOS on the bottom should be DOS. Sort of rewrote the dog hearing, or the dog section, just to say that there was a complaint from Jane Schultz of Forty-Nine Main Street about a dog attack on Ring Road. Ms. Schultz's dog was attacked by another dog owned by Caitlin Jappel. And what is that, destruction for hearings? That Christine Joy made a motion for Frank Bush to extend the restraint order until we, as we prepare to hold the public hearing. And...
Did we vote to do a public hearing? Can't remember if we voted to hold the dog hearing. Did you hear the complaint?
I did.
I thought we did, too. I thought that we kind of did that in one fell swoop, that we were going to have Frank extend the restraining order...
To inform the dog owner of the extension, of the restraint extension, and to prepare for a public hearing on this dog on February thirteenth. So, yes, I do have it down as one.
Perfect.
One thing. Meet with the selectmen hours, somehow add by appointment, because they're not strictly ours now. Under town administrator, basically to rewrite part of it to say the DOR Advisory Committee, which is Christine Joy, John Trainor, Susan Assoff, will meet on two fifteen at five thirty to review and refine the details on the town administrator, and the selectmen's assistant was asked to post...
Actually, we're going to, the, the meeting will be posted for five thirty, but we're going to meet after we complete the CIP plan to do the job description.
So, you're not meeting at five thirty after?
No, we're all meeting at five thirty, because that's our meeting with Collins Group. But once we're done meeting with Collins Group, we're going to stay another hour
I had them at six thirty.
And hash out the job description, rather than schedule another meeting. Thank you, John. That, those look perfect, your suggestions.
So, that's following?
Yeah, following. We'll, we'll just stay and get that done.
Those are just some things I saw, so...
I rewrite, a little bit of rewrite for clarity on the deputy collector issue with the envelopes. Rewrote it to say the envelopes that were sent with the excise tax bills have the wrong address on them. Do not mail your payment in this envelope. Please hand deliver your tax payment to the office or provide your own envelope. And we were, we also clearly stated that this was not an issue with our tax collector's office. It was an issue with our subcontractor.
That's in her email? That's who she used, that's who she...
The deputy collector?
That's how she replied to them.
Right. I, I just wanted it to know that that wasn't their mistake.
Okay. That's why I said sent by the deputy collector. That's what I put in there.
All right. Okay, that's fine.
I want to, that's why one of the, I looked at her emails, who sent it.
Okay. Under minutes, we also approve the minutes for the board of selectmen in the Board of选定 committee. So, motion to amend the minutes as, or approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This needs to go back to Frank. He needs to complete his own budget, not us.
Why do you have it?
No, because we...
Because it was in my box.
It went to his individual.
Can you give it back to him?
If you want to read it, read it, but I don't see that it's, is it right?
Yeah, it was in the mailbox with, and tagged for me.
What is that through? Like, what timeframe? Because we already have him.
That is, "Dear Animal Control Supervisor, as the MGL Chapter 140, Section 151 of the Mayor of each city and town Board of Selectmen, each town shall annually designate an animal control officer who may police or may be police or constable. Please return the completed forms to our office by February first, 2017, for the 2017 designation year."
So, what you're saying is his appointment is still valid?
Yeah.
So, then we don't need it, then. We just need to sign it.
We just need to sign that.
They split when we got the new map center launched with the dog licenses. They changed all the dog license information. They made two positions, inspector of animals and animal control. So, we put in with the regular course of appointments that we have that go from July first forward. So, you, on June twenty-seventh of 2016, you all signed an appointment slip that goes to the end of this fiscal year, June.
So, our mistake, we don't need those. We just needed the state paper.
Perfect.
So, we do have a valid one all the way to the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, perfect.
Good, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So, we don't need this, so we...